Are we missing?
I'm ready to roll. I don't have anybody here that is here, so.
I was gonna say, did you get some notices from folks that they might be getting?
Jamie told me she was not able to make it and I haven't talked to Laura.
Okay, alright, well, folks, let's get started. We'll go ahead and start with our roll call. Margot Knippel, I am here. Tyler Lane.
Here.
Laura Kelly. Gary Nelson.
Here.
Tommy Smith.
Here.
Jamie Lara. And Berna Tucker.
Yeah.
Perfect. Alright. Our second item. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from the May 10 meeting? Have you had that opportunity? Do we have a motion to approve those minutes? Okay.
I just had just one question on the minutes.
Okay.
And it was the next to the last paragraph on the back.
Okay.
Second. Second or second. This is complaints.
Okay.
Cause I was like. It's supposed to be complaint last, right?
Well, if it's something I said, who knows? It could be, I may have actually said that word. It's hard to say. Can we go ahead and make sure that type of was figured? Okay, awesome, alright. That's going to be taken care of. So, right now on the table, Gary has made a motion to approve those minutes. Do we have a second? A second, alright, Tyler seconds. And if everyone approves. If everyone will vote yes. unanimous? Yes, 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 yes. Anyone voting against? That's unanimous. You sure can't.
Might as well just take care of this now. Business here. The pay that you guys receive went from $50 to $3,000. That's gonna get paid out in July. We're gonna keep that up this from here. Usually you'd be getting that check in January. So you'll be getting six months paid in July. Just keep an eye out for that check and then once another year cycles, July of next year. So I just wanted to make sure you understood what was going on there. Another, some good news. Allison has taken out responsibilities. Trent Lewis, our county senatorian, has accepted a new position elsewhere. It's been important to us. But worked some things out with Mark Campbell on the board to, at Allison, to get some more duties that really are related to planning and zoning and permitting. And that involves permitting accepted tanks and grain fields, wells, and also doing inspections, swimming pools. Anything else I want to say?
And tetra points.
So, she's begun that work right now and yeah, we're excited. She's out of the pool quite a bit. Number seven eyes over the hour where she comes back with some violations, other violations for the take care of. And so, so this is working out good, so just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that we've taken up, or to stick it on more duties.
Congrats. And congratulations.
She's excited and she's.
Any other nonsense? No other nonsense, awesome. Then let's move on to our new business, public hearing. Tina Castin Dick. Did I say that correctly? Tell me the correct.
We said it, Castin D.
Castin D. Okay, I hate mispronouncing people's names.
No, that's our report.
Disrespectful. Tina Castin D. An amendment to the official zoning atlas, rezoning from the mineral extraction to the A2 transitional agricultural zoning district for more or less 20.1 acres of land located approximately one mile east of the intersection of US Highway 169 and 235th Street with the street address of 2185 235th Street. Jeff, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, I do. Thank you, the county chair. Many of the planning and zoning commissioners, Jeff Johnson. Planning and zoning administrator presenting this request. Next slide, Allison. The applicant Tina Castin D is requesting an amendment to the official zoning atlas for the zoning from the mineral extraction to the A2 transitional agricultural district for approximately 20 acres of land located one mile east of the intersection of the US Highway 169 and 235th Street. This is at 2185 235th Street, as shown on the map, with the purpose to subdivide the property and construct a single home in the future. So, this is the location map with the subject property. 20 acres are white and red. Lands to the north and north, south, and west of the subject property consists of mainly timber underutilized for crop production. There are established homesteads on smaller acreages to the south or east with more than a half a dozen single family homes within a half a mile of the subject property. These residences have been in existence for over the past 30 years or more. So, next slide, Allison. This is the county zoning map. Lands to the northeast and west of the subject property are zone mineral extraction, as shown in purple, with agricultural transitional and agricultural preservation zone lands east and south, respectively. The proposed zoning to A2 would be consistent with the zoning to the east and southwest of the subject property. Right now, the subject property consists of a single family residence and accessory structures. There's a 120 timber land with a CSR, farm student ratio of 41.15, which is less than 65, which is desirable for production that has a sustainable yield. The applicant has informed staff that they do not have any knowledge of subsurface minerals that may exist on the property and have not been approached by any mining companies for the purpose to extract the minerals. Changing the zoning district classification from ME to A2 will allow the owner or successors to subdivide to A2. To subdivide the property, opposed A2 zoning allows residential acreages as a permitted use with a maximum density of no more than four non-farm residences per quarter section of not less than two acres of land. And currently, there are two single family residential homes in the northeast quarter of this section of township, A2, Section 12. This change in zoning of A2 should not have any detrimental impacts to adjacent properties that are smaller in size. The property does plan a paved road of 235th Street and has acceptable bulk of surface of traffic. There's an existing electrical service that serves the residences in the area. Subdivision or creation of a new lot of acres of a new single family home requires install a separate well system in compliance with our county requirements and state requirements and should not have any impacts on public utilities or facilities. Slide, so we'll set those right there. The planning and zoning commission will see you before a favorable right preparation approval to rezone the property from ME to A2. And I know the applicant is available here. Does she have any questions? This is a public hearing. I'll properly mention the subject property or notify by mail and notice for place to read the whole person.
Thank you, Jeff. Did you receive any public comments written otherwise or anything?
No, Denny Heatherington came in. We talked about it and he did not discuss any issues or concerns. He was aware of meetings being held tonight. Nothing to put in writing. That's a good question, I should mention that. Nothing in writing that I received as of today.
Okay. Would the applicant like to speak?
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine, go ahead and state your name and.
Yeah, my name is James Castin D. My mom, Tina Castin D, is the actual landowner. She would love to have been here, but she was the principal and they sent her the train to take us, so she didn't have to make it. So she just wanted to say thank you for hearing us, being able to have you here. Basically, our main goal here is to divide the property and build a single family home for either me and my mom. I haven't really quite figured it out yet, but basically it's been our home acreage since 1990. We've talked with neighbors on all sides. Everybody's happy here. Anybody to get us in there, all, everybody gets along in the neighborhood. But yeah, basically, if we can get it in A2, if we get it split and then kind of go from there. Let's find out, see if he's got any questions.
I just had a question and without spending hours going back through my stuff, this little section is one that we resolved, isn't it? I believe.
Yeah. There's been some changes to A2 material.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess that's what I wanted to point out is that we have made those changes, so.
And then the little one there is straight south of us. That's just Monday's. That was resuming for him also. So we're kind of informing what's kind of going on and everybody going every way.
It's just, it looked like, it's kind of like when you showed it up there, it kind of looks like spot zoning, but that's something that we, I remember, I remember we had discussed kind of in the same area here, like two, three years. It's been a few years, something like that.
And I found it kind of odd, this is the one question that I had too when I was kind of looking over everything, is this one little piece that's right here, purple right next to slide right here. That there's a house on it, but it's still in the ME.
Not, not that little sliver.
No, not the little.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a house there with some of the things.
Yeah, and so I was like, that's not where your mom's house is, though, is it?
No, that's like Jerry Grady's property.
Okay. Cause I thought that almost seems strange that that one is still in the ME.
Yeah, and I thought, doing any research, maybe my grandfather, it might have been constructed prior to the ME zoning district. I mean, maybe he was a property owner, house there. I mean, we could go back to that.
I think it got resumbed after, did we go for landfilling?
Actually, when that house was constructed.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Cause I wondered, that was my thought too, was was it grandfathered in? And I'm like, is that something that maybe we need to kind of look into them to get that? Because it's just on our map anyways.
That's.
The ME zoning does allow single family residences.
Yeah.
There's criteria that has to be met, but it's hard to say. Maybe we have to do more research on that to find out whether or not that adjacent property, is there prior to the ME zoning district that came in that could have been. One thing that is legal.
Yeah. Or do you see any, and I kind of see what you're getting at, is that that's going to leave this little teeny tiny spot looking like spot zoning.
Right.
Of an ME zone.
And then, yeah, especially since there's a house on it. Yeah, like, I'm not having a problem. Oh, with this one, it's, I'm not.
And you know, I'm guessing that when the mineral extraction was put in, this was another case of that, rather than let's go on the property, let's just draw a line.
Yeah.
And say, okay, this is all mineral extraction. And I remember this rezone and I, I want to, I can't remember, I want to say there was somebody, was it a family member or was there an issue with the family member?
Yeah, so our neighbor Jerry Grady, his mom owned that ground mechanic a lot. So there was kind of an issue with him and his mom at the time, her selling it around, but I mean, that was far a gear between.
Okay.
Everything I figured out, I think it was right from A is what it came down to. Cause Jerry had A on it or something.
Okay.
There's the pay field in the back.
Yeah.
Okay, I knew there was something, something I couldn't remember when we did the rezone. I remember something with timber.
There's a really deep, there's a lot of really deep goldies in timbers that were there.
Yeah, it's all remaining.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
But you're right, I mean, one brings up a good point. It'd be nice if that was zoning to, as opposed to ME. The ME offers very little, if you look at the source, in terms of what it has to offer. So, I think in time, they take a while, they're gonna want something, but in the A2, no, I mean, something maybe to set back, that's more favorable than A2, or they're gonna want to just give it these on, so.
And that particular property owner didn't come in and make comments or anything?
No.
So that's, okay.
Yeah, we did discuss too much of the church, told him, gone on. He said, like I said, he was happy. So, I'm not sure if there's something I need to say.
Okay.
He said he's a long order.
Okay, maybe he's just not even aware that it's still on ME.
That could be.
You know, that's just the one thing that just screamed right out.
So you would anticipate one house or potential both?
No, there would just be one house. Basically, there's a shed in the middle of the property, like storage shed. The property would just go right to the center of the new line. That would over there just be a single family house for, like I said, one of our, either me or Andy, and one with my mom.
Okay.
Just, we had to figure that part out, but.
Sure, yeah. Cause your mom's house is already, is in the area, right?
Yeah, it's on the left side of it.
Right, like, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So do you see the field on the right there, the kind of open half of the property?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I guess that was, that kind of stuck out to me too, that it's like, wow, there's gonna be one little teeny tiny spot in there for mineral extraction. And I don't, I mean, obviously wouldn't want to do anything with that without a conversation with the landowner, but if the landowner would be favorable to that.
In a term of going that would be zoning for it to be.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, I mean, there's a lot of spaces, there's a lot of spaces, I feel, in our map that, that have that, where, like I said, they just, you know, drew these lines and took these big blocks of property and we have been piecemealing it out over the last so many years of, you know, changing, like Berna says, some, some property owners may be unaware of what their zoning is and it's not an issue for them because they're happy with their property and everything's great, but what it makes our map look like is so many of these little pieces. And with the board supervisors wanting to see more residential and more, more of these houses built in some of those areas, maybe when we do a complete comp plan update, maybe that's some of those things we should look at.
Wait, we send them something then, say this? Cause I don't, he probably.
Well, maybe you can see these little areas that could be cleaned up, so to speak, and we would put them on, and there's any objections to it.
Yeah, oh, definitely, I would want to.
Maybe they're changing some property rights.
When, when we do a complete comprehensive plant overhaul, we aren't required to go and contact all those individual landowners. I know this last comprehensive plan that came in, they rezoned a whole chunk of our property to Ag Industrial and no one contacted us at all. And when I came in and said, hey, what's deal with that? They said, well, when you do a large blanket one, you don't have to. That's what I got told, this was before I was on the sport. And I said, well, you know, I don't want my, I don't want my property stoned Ag Industrial. I said, well, okay, we'll take it out. So, you know, I mean, I wouldn't want to do anything without contacting the landowner.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, as far as the mineral extraction zone, obviously in this little piece, mining has never happened on that property. So no, we've talked before with these mineral extraction zones about having to have the mining company sign off on them, but if this is a spot that's never been mined.
Never been mined.
Looks like it comes up close to it.
Right, yeah.
It's just, there being a chance that it would be mine.
That is gonna, would be a very tough spot to mine. I know who else has been around.
I don't know, she says she'll try to find the big word, she bought it, she bought it, she wants mineralite to the property.
Yeah, sometimes it turns to something. Yeah. I know Riley, that's in there, they're slowly moving that way, they're taking all the tree lines out, right?
And they're out of there again, so if that means they're done or if they're just going to different side, but.
They like the bonds around, so.
Yeah. It's actually, where they've actually been mining is quite a bit from the very tip of, or.
Yeah.
You know, but yeah, they had that really close to it. It's a good walk.
Yeah, they started moving out, let's get going back this way. That's what they think of.
Yeah. And they should get it to that too.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's, it's, for me, it's a concern just to, when we're changing from ME going to, you know, A2 and allowing, you know, more housing and stuff, if somebody were to come up with single, for the down the line, that's, that could be a real mess. So, as long as that's, that's something that's been mined previously.
No, no, and like, they do all like, they don't do it underground anymore, it's all open pit.
Okay.
It's not like it's been underground for as far as I understand.
Okay.
But I know it's been in our family since 90, it's just been filled before that, it's part of our lives.
Okay. So that's, at least if you were to put something on, maybe with engineering, just have an engineer do some kind of a possible, I don't know what you'd call it, ground check. Just to make sure that you're not in sync all bit. And if they're all doing, if it's all, when they're open quarry type versus underground and it's like where you're gonna put your house, it's like you're far enough south of it anyway. That'd be my one thing I need to do, new house up, just become single.
Well, I know West County, there are some areas that are, I mean, that's undermined quite a ways.
My area there.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, as far as I understand, I know the way. And Jerry Grady's property, his house is officially.
Right.
Right there, so.
Right.
And then it's definitely.
Okay. And for us, Jeff, you know, going, again, going to, doing some sort of a comp plan, complete overhaul, those mineral extraction zones, I mean, they make me nervous and I know that's something that when this comprehensive plan was put together, they had extensive conversations, I think with some of the mining companies, and I think they are actually the ones that helped outline those areas, it's my understanding, that said, no, these areas need be considered.
I don't think that's the case. I mean, trying to go back and apply documentation on how this, this big vast area was established and it's a lot of area, you know, I mean, is it all justified? I don't know. I mean, they did their research, you know, I wonder what. And that, you know, this whole area, so to speak. It's gonna have to give you this again, and definitely, so we have, just understand the geology of it all, you know, exactly where this stuff is. I don't know. You would think USG, some of the other companies would have that, you know? I mean, even though they may not own the land, you have a good idea where these, where these minerals are, so that we can, you know, plan according. So just start going on the lights on, if that's the case, I don't have the documentation by office, like I said.
Did they have to sign off on that for the egg part or for the A2B part?
This part is what.
As saying, everything's, you know, safe, that we're not doing anything else from a mineral extraction?
Right. They're, they're spent, you know, they, it was a good way to use that land.
Yeah.
It was a big thing, yeah.
Okay.
When we, we do our, our big maps, it wouldn't be a bad idea to get some of them, just some guys in here to see, just to keep out of the way from.
That's important, industry area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I think they're all still mining except for some, some point one.
Yeah, and they're still.
Are they?
Yeah, Riley comes in and does theirs, so they're still mining.
Oh, okay.
It's just their, the land is not. And they're really working North of town now, it's the big areas. But that's natural. Yeah.
It's good to help people. I mean, yeah, it's important, I mean, you know, we want to be able to utilize.
Your line goes along, go and train that, I believe, go and train here. So that's where that, your line goes along. So yeah, anything that's a mine is took from somewhere out and they got it out.
Okay. That answered all of my questions. Unless anyone else has any additional questions?
Yeah.
Would you like to make a little comment?
You have any comments? You want to speak now?
We'd love to hear from you.
So are you okay with it then? Are you, you're both yet up or down? Are you just okay with it? No objections? Okay, okay, no, we just, you know, or having a meeting to see if anybody had any comments. Sure.
And that's, I'm glad you're here and it's good going forward to know what public comments are, so that, you know, going, going to other rezonings and that gives us, when you come up with a question, it's maybe a question we haven't thought of, so that's real helpful. I was just, I thought he was going through his mind, like he maybe had a question, so. Alright, well, we can close the public comments section and would you like to do a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. It wasn't on here, so I didn't know if I wanted to do that. Okay. Okay, we will need a motion to have a vote to rezone from mineral extraction to A2, if anyone would like to make that motion.
Oh, my God. Just like how you said that.
Just like how it's written on here.
Yeah.
And do we have a second on that motion?
I was.
You have a second, alright, thank you Tyler. Alright, we have a motion and a second. The rezone, mineral extraction to A2, more or less 20.1 acres of land and address 2185 235th Street. And I will just read through our roll call. Margot Knippel votes yes. Tyler Lane.
Yes.
And Laura Kelly.
Yes.
Gary Nelson.
Yes.
Jamie Lara is absent. Berna Tucker.
Yes.
We had unanimous vote and so that passes. This will. Oh, I forgot Tommy, I'm sorry Tommy.
Yes.
I had your name down here and, and I started making, I started making my comments here next to Gary Nelson's when I put it next to yours. So, I apologize for that. Still unanimous vote and we can expect that to go to board supervisors.
Yeah, I'll be back in touch with Mr. Castin D tomorrow morning, look at the schedule. I never promised him anything out this week.
Oh, okay, I didn't, okay. Okay.
Cause I don't really get the table or whatever, so we'll, we'll come up with a date and I just gotta make sure we allow ample time for notices to go on paper and mailers to go on. So, first consideration in front of the board, so.
Appreciate it.
I guess I'm having July.
July, so. Hopefully my mom can have that.
No more training, but I'll make sure.
I mean, specifically.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you everybody.
Yep, thank you. Okay, Jeff, review and discuss our transportation corridor planning survey from NSA, National Services.
So I know Gary, you were here, you were here. Tyler, did you ever ask me?
I would not.
Yeah. When we kick this off, the corridor planning. That needs to get done and one thing they wanted to do right away was a survey that they're gonna get out there on social media and other avenues to get public input in that direction and how we move more of our landowners to help with. So we know this is compliant. And I went ahead and talked to NSA this afternoon and they would like to get your feedback and input and whatever changes we have, so they can go ahead and get going on the survey and get out there and start getting this input before next week. Next week, you have to go find the agenda, establish. Survey the stake holders. So, you know, this process is gonna take, which is fine, we've got plenty of time on this, it's gonna take a little bit longer. I think I saw one scheduled that moved out to January. Really think it's gonna take a whole year, but to get our original, really, the public needs to this, which we really want to. That's one of the most important goals, which we, of course, in this process. So, if you had the opportunity to take a look at the survey, obviously, if they wanted to make very easy, hopefully they didn't make it too long, again, go ahead to Allison George, kind of. We'll turn it off, anybody? If you're going off, anybody has any comments, concerns, issues, or they want to have another question added or rephrased, let me know. Age, whether at, I love it. That's kind of good, they left that question open. About three reasons why you want to. Some of the changes they'd like to see, and again, this is all county and city, you know. They left the space here, they had other, which is good. The challenges are. So we're getting out the next three questions. Strikes, the better. Opportunities, I see. The issues, concerns. I hope we get a lot of response with this.
Do you know what kind of timeframe we're going to give people to respond?
Have they started? Have they started?
Won't you that?
Yeah.
This, this is one exercise of many.
One of many, okay. Well, I guess my first impression reading through all this information, I like the format, but for transportation corridor planning, to me it had more of a feel of comp plan overhaul.
Yeah.
And the one question on mobility was about the only one that was specific to the transportation part and I didn't know if if that could be, I don't even know what the questions are would be. To make it a little more specific that it's a transportation corridor study as opposed to a comp plan overhaul.
That's, that was my first question too.
Okay.
So with that, with that in mind, I'll go back to him to have him retool on this and, you know, I'm trying to get more focused on transportation. Or obiding as opposed to more general, I mean, there are some questions in there that are that are related, but it needs to be more focused, I think, like you said.
Because it's pretty broad, questions are pretty broad. Which is good if it was a comp plan overhaul. It is, it's good, I like more of the questions that I'm, it's like, and this would be the same thing with, you know, narrowing it down more to transportation, if this is going to go out to homes by a computer, how many responses per computer are allowed? If you just want her household computer one. Good question, you know. There's a lot of times it's like, when something like this is sent out, you get one response. Listen, my wife might not agree to do the whole.
Yeah.
Really, yeah, or you know, they might even have college kids or somebody, you know, it'd be good to get some younger. Yeah. Response, whether or not they will respond, well, it may not, but it's just the number of responses per computer or at the address. I guess I just, I was expecting more transportation type, if that's what the supervisors are looking for right now. I am totally on board with redoing the comp plan, if we want to redo the comp plan, but if what they've asked us for is a transportation corridor survey to what everybody wants, I just thought it should maybe be more.
And that's really how it should be laid, you know, where it's done top, transportation portal or survey.
I just don't want to go back to the board of supervisors and not have the information they asked us for. Considering the issue they brought in about, if we're not fixing that. You know. Oh, I'm such a buzzkill. I'm such, I'm such a buzzkill.
No, I mean.
I mean, when you think about the county spending money, we're spending taxpayer money, and if this is what our supervisors or elected officials have asked us for, I don't want to spend a lot of time and waste MSA's time and just say, like I said, this all to me reads like comp plan and not specific to the transportation corridor. I was expecting more like, you know, how do you enter Fort Dodge? Do you enter on the east side? Do you enter on the west side? Do you, you know?
Areas.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, what, where, what is your commute? You know, what would make your commute better? What is, you know, the downfall of your commute? Those kinds of questions, I guess, to me, would help for the transportation study. Not that these weren't good.
No, yeah.
They were good.
And I totally do pass, I just went right past transportation, I was reading.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, you're right. And, but if, okay, so now we're going to do this transportation, I'm going to play kind of like the devil's advocate for just a regular Joe Smith looking at this. There are other words, transportation and immediately, and not doing anything else. I don't have any of this transportation, is there another word that we can use versus transportation? Even if it's.
Maybe it's warming or something.
Yeah, so they're going to think, oh, I'm at a semi garage, I'm going to use it, or I won't. It's just, it's, it's a word that doesn't, people won't think of like an everyday use, they're going to think of it more as like, this is a job, or this is something like the DOT or something on that line or versus they're not going to think of transportation. They do every day, they come to Fort Dodge from the outer limits.
And like you said before, like in a family where maybe someone is a truck driver and the other person isn't, is the person who's the truck driver, they're going to look at it differently. He's going to have a completely different idea of transportation and what his transportation issues are versus somebody else's.
So, yeah, I have two truck drivers in my family and they're like, they answer that separate than me, so, yeah.
Yeah, I already know my brother, my brother-in-law's responses are.
Yeah.
There's no place to stop for people with a big rig, there's no place to stop to get a sandwich.
Shoulders are not wearing that sort of big rig to pull over, but yeah, 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 so.
And that'll be a completely different response from someone who's just, you know, just got a small vehicle and they're probably going to say, hey, transportation's great, I get around that great.
Yeah.
Well, we can work on that, I'll work with them, but you know, the first sign up here is this is a survey for the people, what's your kind of persistent development? Of a vision, goals, strategies to update the two thousand eight capital plan to address highway corridor planning or something, I don't know, you know. I mean, maybe more specific, but it makes sense to.
Right, just the word transportation, just, I just, I just feel like that shouldn't be anywhere it's going to go out to the people, I just, I just, I see the glazing of the eyes all day. And that, but that just comes from my marketing side, because when you market something, you're going to dumb it way down.
I think that's what it's really to address the highway corridor planning, how these, you know.
Yeah, make it more formal, yeah.
Yeah.
You know.
Something like that, and then getting the questions that are more specific to that.
Yeah.
And focus on those, because again, if you don't want to make it too long.
No, you want to be able to take a survey within like two to three minutes.
Yeah.
And state that at the very beginning, say, you know, I know it says please take a few minutes, well, some, yeah, how many is it to do, it's just going to be longer than two to three. Usually you're not going to get people taking more than three minutes.
No.
They see five minutes. People just don't. Oh, yeah. They want to do, they don't, they're like, I want to do work, I want to go in.
Like you said, make it, make it a less formal, more.
Yeah, something that sounds, something that sounds somewhat interesting, that they might say they're going to actually think of something that I might have to say, you know, they're going to take my consideration in. And it's only going to take three minutes to do it? Sure, I will, you know. It'll take longer if they do a lot of the others and they want to, you know, voice their opinion, which is great. We want their voice of opinion versus just, yeah, check that box, check that box. But then that's their choice once they get into it.
And the questions that are on here, I said, well, they're good questions, but I'm, again, I'm jumping into that truck driver, you know, I mean, some of these don't apply to the kind of answers that they might have.
Yeah.
What are, what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses as far as the transportation part of it, right?
You know, the tougher reasons you want to live, work and relax in West County does not have any impact on transportation. I mean, you look at, I mean, you got road maintain and that in your answers choices, but the areas that you're going to choose from, that's your comment.
Well.
Maybe they just changed the question a little bit.
I guess I just, like I said, my big concern is going back to supervisors and not having what we were asked to do. And, and because of the issue, because of the travel center and there are supervisors' concerns of what are we doing, what are we doing with our stretch of four lane twenty, what are we doing with P fifty nine, what are we doing? You know, that to me is what I, I feel like that's what the supervisors asked us. You know, what are we doing with these areas? And it's not that the other things don't, don't, you know, coincide with it and have a lot to do with it, they do, but I don't know, I just, I didn't feel like some of the questions asked enough, maybe.
I totally agree, I didn't want to even put my input into this yet. I'm glad this is all coming out and I just pray that it will come out, so.
Okay.
I like.
I wasn't happy with it.
I like the very first part though, where it says you put your little size where you reside.
Yeah.
That's, that's a perfect place to start.
Yeah.
So the most questions are just, it needs to be more specific.
Yeah.
What attracts you, understand that, you know, where are you coming off?
Right, for transportation, we're, we're, you know, you know, like maybe what is your commute like, where are your roads like, because if they pinpoint it here, then you're going to kind of know what routes are taken to get. Because it's like, I got, I got those, but if you want me to get across, I can take them in town.
Well, and then again, you know, your guy who's driving truck and, you know, he's got his, his, where he comes into town and he goes out to the plant, there's that part of his commute, and then the rest of it is when he's in that truck and he's driving all day. What are his issues then? You know, I mean, it's.
And those truck issues are completely different versus a personal vehicle.
Yeah, yeah, completely different.
Yeah, and there's a ton of truck drivers all around West County, because of all the different industrial things that we have, so. Hopefully we can get a lot of those. Not just personal vehicles.
Yeah. And I just feel like that's kind of what we were asked.
Yeah.
I mean, the presentation that they gave us, that MSA gave us, it was a good presentation, but I just felt the whole presentation was geared towards comp plan, complete comp plan overhaul. Not saying we wouldn't use them to do that sometime, but I mean, I don't want to waste a year and then have more zoning issues come up on four lane twenty or, you know, one sixty nine or something like that and be right back at the same spot of not having an answer to get the supervisors. But I guess that's just my thoughts. Do you want to fix that, Jeff?
With a new survey.
Okay. Have you had any questions or comments from the supervisors yet on any of this?
No. I believe in their minds that they they want this process to go through you guys, that it relates through you guys, and obviously, they're interested in this project, definitely. Waiting and finding some recommendations and so forth, so. It's interesting, it's exciting. It's neat finding for the future, you know, and see the opportunity that's there, especially when that works on MP fifty nine, you know.
Yeah.
Make sure that it's applied appropriately, properly in the zone, so it looks like that, McDonald's after that. Other than controls, like a stomach requirement, so remember.
Well, just knowing like you're thinking, all the growth east of town and the stuff that's going on east of town. I, I mean, how do the truck drivers feel like, how does the general public feel, man, I got to find all these trucks now? You know, that's, that's where I feel like we're missing, we're missing that part of it is, is getting that sort of input from people, so we know, I mean, we need to plan.
A lot of, along P fifty nine, a lot of the ground has been mined and, and packed, and I don't think it'll ever be suitable for a very big construction. Does anybody know that kind of gear, whether it's stable enough for? It's usually not to have, you know, let's get back to like, what we do is like, hey, back in, you know, box oil and it takes a ramp for that to. Settle. Could you hate to improve something? Yeah, you wouldn't want to be able to advance to any time soon, right? Years for that. Yeah. P fifty nine is really blossomed, you know, several years ago, it was just nothing, but I don't know which is the main entrance now. Would it be P fifty nine or?
Yeah. And see, that's the question that we need, that's the question we need to be on here.
You can go, you can go both ways.
I can go both ways, I pretty much smack down in the middle, but I'm always going to pick P fifty nine.
Where is that?
So I am just south of twenty, right?
Okay.
So.
Okay, you're right there.
So, yeah. I don't know, I could go either way, but I could be smack first, one sixty nine, take corner.
Okay, that's a good point, see, that's the kind of point that we need on that.
For me, I come up one sixty nine, but it depends on what part of town I'm going to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to go in P fifty nine, I'm going to come in twenty, or I'm going to come in and do the cross town connector, so in me, I'm like, okay, where? Yeah, so I don't have a certain route anywhere, all the things that we're going to tell.
Yeah, where there's construction, where there's not construction.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, to me, I consider, like even if I'm going to Alita's, I'm still going to take P fifty nine, it's still faster.
Really, really?
Taking one sixty nine and then all those lights, because they're, none of those lights are synchronized, you will hit every single.
Yeah, that is true. That's why I always take the cross town connector. Because it's like, you time them right. But there's so much construction.
Well, and first, for, for people at the county, that's a big issue. I mean, if you're in town here, it's maybe not that big of an issue, but for residents of the county, you've already driven fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, you're, you know, wanting to save that little bit of extra time, and I feel like those are the questions that I would like to see go out to, to folks, you know, when you come into Fort Dodge, what entrance do you, do you take? And why? Is it because your favorite gas station's there? Is it because your favorite restaurant is there? You know, what would make that better? What would, you know, what would make it worse? It infuriates me when you see a whole bunch of trucks lined up out here on one sixty nine, right outside of McDonald's. I mean, that for years has infuriated me, but, as I said, there's no place for the guys, I mean, now, now there's a quick star. But, you, you know, that for the longest time was, it was just a traffic hazard, I felt.
Yeah.
But I guess those are the questions I'd like to see asked people to get more specific on that transportation part of it, and once, you know, once you get that transportation part of it nailed down, that's when I think we look at that and we say, okay, here's where our people are going, here's where they want to go, here's the direction they want to go. Well, maybe we need more gas stations there.
Right.
Or maybe we need more restaurants here, and I think that's how we figure that out.
Yeah, think about not just the people living in town. Yeah, because it's, I mean, you might not think necessarily Fort Dodge as a bedroom community, but it's not really a bedroom, because everybody outside of the bedroom community, but everybody from those bedroom communities are coming in to A, either work or B, shop here, and when we shop here, we're being here, you know.
The shopping is really bad.
Yeah, it has, it really has, especially with the mall.
Yeah.
But I mean, you still have a lot of your stores on your own, but if you want to get lots of shopping done, usually it's A's something like that that you had to, you know.
I think, I think one of the most important things is the aesthetics of it all. Because if you're driving, you're coming, P fifty nine, highway twenty, you got that north east water, it's kind of, it's got a little, it's got to be attractive, you just don't want to put anything in there that's going to look ugly, you know, this is really one of your interests in the city, you know, and whatever's going to develop right around there, so I think we all agree that there'll be some aesthetic requirements, like architectural requirements that come out of this. They'll be minimal, but I think, you know, I mean, to the point, maybe that if you guys service an architect, you can maybe make your elements, make sure that. I mean, to the point, maybe that if you guys service an architectural, you can maybe, you know, make sure that it's attractive, and so many times you see just shopping, it's all not very familiar whatsoever, and, you know, stuff we had to work with a lot, it is, though. Some people may not think it's attractive, or I don't think they buy it, it's not ugly, I don't think, but, but all the, yeah. But the decent behind it, there's, you know, we worked through all those issues to make sure that we didn't have that hook on Highway 24. Yeah, you're gonna have the gasoline pumps that are gonna be visible, but decent way into the back, and there's a lot of thought that would do that. Making sure that it's somewhat attractive in that quarter, so.
Previously, do some pumps aren't attractive?
Some contractors, something, filling up the gas, as you drive along the interstate, it's a backside activity, yeah.
Well, I just, just in LaMars the other day for work, and I think they've done a really good job of making their town just really appealing, and they've done a good job with their planning and things, and that was my first impression when I drove in LaMars, it's like, wow, they really thought, because they have a lot of trucking companies there, too. And I thought, they really have done a good job with kind of isolating those areas, but keeping them neat and clean.
Yeah, making sure all your loading zones are in the back, waiting the right way, showcasing the front building.
Yeah, it's huge difference.
Oh, huge difference, yeah, and if you don't have any controls in your zoning ordinance, you know, the they're building up the way they want, you know, you know, it comes right down to, they just, you know, ignore some young staff or government, just with a little, they just, that can fly, there's nothing really.
Well.
It's just that appeal.
And, and we can, we can have the appeal, and, and you're right, that's a good thing, you know, that we need to look at, but, you know, until we identify what we need. Um, I mean, I hate having to go all the way across town to get to Menards, you know, and there's a lot of times that's why I take 4 lane 20, it's like all the way around that way, but if you look at the west side of Fort Dodge, and you look at the truck traffic that's through the west side of Fort Dodge, I mean, there's just, there's, there's just not a whole lot there for a guy. And that's one of the things that it could be done aesthetically pleasing, but it sure would be nice to have the services there, you know, I, I mean.
I just really haven't seen much traffic out there. I mean, even my left here at the 80s, you know, Topdome, or McDonald's came in, but he's, he's, he's really took off there. There's really not a lot, a lot of trips there.
What helps all this? Yeah, I just, I just have to wonder with, you know, with the ethanol plants, and semi trucks that go back and forth there, if there was a place for those kind of, you know, vehicles to stop, would they stop? Would they stop? Would they spend dollars? Would they, you know, I mean, some of these guys that are hauling, and they're hauling, they only get maybe one or two loads a day. They're coming from that far away out to the ethanol plants. And, and I, I don't think about, we live right behind that, and we don't haul anything to it, just because we're just small farmers. But I'm looking at these guys that are big farmers that are coming quite a ways away, and they're bringing their trucks up. Would they stop? Would they get a meal? Would they, you know, fuel up? Would they do those things if we had something out there? And that's the kind of thing that I hope in the survey, that question, what the survey's gonna tell us.
I mean, and, and when you do have the Highway 24, they're, I'm gonna lend itself to some type of distribution centers, you know, I'm just, they're, they're not the most attractive things, we gotta make sure they're planning. You know, some wanted to do one, and I was working with them, to make sure that all your doors are in the back, and that showcase the building, and put the landscaping up, you know, there's things, you know. You know, what are we gonna be, the desired uses along that border? And I think the distribution's gonna be one of them, I mean, they're just a four lane, we see a lot of truck traffic out there. Whether, you know, it could be an Amazon, a small little satellite area, or.
I think that's very attractive.
Well, that's why we have to have some type of aesthetic requirements. Yeah, no, I know, it's.
And again, that goes back to asking the right questions.
No, you gotta remember what other uses are gonna lend itself along that border, because you'll have your gas station, maybe a restaurant.
I think it looks great for farm ground.
Yeah, just leave it alone, it's all, yeah, you're right. Yeah.
Yeah. But by asking, like I said, the right questions, that's why, I, I mean, this was, this was okay, it just, to me, it didn't ask the right questions. And if we, if we get all these answers of, of guys saying, yeah, I wish there was a truck stop somewhere that actually catered to truck drivers, then we need to look at those areas, because when you start putting in a truck stop, then your distribution center. Well, they kind of, you know, those kinds of things to me kind of go hand in hand. You've got a place for the guys to stop, and, you know, it goes back to, brother-in-law told me, he said, there's no place in this town for an over-the-road driver to stop, stop, take a shower, do a quick little laundry, get a meal, you know, sleep for eight hours. I mean, there just aren't any really good places.
That's definitely surprised me, that with all the trucking companies that are in town, how we have not had our Loops, or Pilot, or something like that, that's accomplished. We don't have any of them, close.
Yeah.
So, I've always found that.
And not just, not just the trucking companies, with, with the mines, and, and I mean, you've got, you know, and along with trucking companies, you know, we've got the big rigs and.
And just, you know, but even now with all the ethanol, and CJ Bio, and all of that, and, and we've got, I mean, like, even just down past us, which is still in Green County, but you got Drivesys, and, I mean, there's all, there's, there's nothing. And they, they are coming from West County, going down to, they go right by us, day in and day out, not right now, because it's close to the bridge, but
Fort Dodge is a great place to, to look at your CDL here in Iowa Central, and, you know, track them, you got Highway 20 right here to get out to the interstate.
We've got the right intersections, we've got, with, with 4 lane 20, we've got 169, we've got 7, we've got so many of those, and I just maybe need to, and, you know, hopefully that's what we'll do with the study then, is really look at those areas, and just say, man, what have we changed this zoning? And, be, because let's face it, these guys that are, they're developing that, when you talk about Loops or that kind of thing, they're looking at a few things, they're looking at dollars spent in the area, they're, they're looking at their, their traffic counts, and they're looking at where could I put this thing, and if we don't have our apps aligned, then they'll guess.
I think what will come out of this is that we'll establish certain land uses, and then obviously if they wanna change the zoning, that zoning is a proposal that's consistent with that land use that's identified. I mean, I don't think changing, doing something drastic or changing zoning, they'll, they'll identify the areas of overlay or something, but I mean, that's all, gotta keep it online, you know, you know, about how things are gonna work out, come together, so. But definitely the land uses are first one to take a look at. That's the appropriate names for this area. Because that's why, I mean, he had mentioned establishing a compatible ODMAX, to make sure that zoning matches up with the land use, that always can be changed, you know, over time, things change, things do change, you know, so.
We know that this survey could be brought just to the West County. People of West County are excited, brought to people that work in West County.
So, what we're gonna do is I'm gonna bring back all your issues, concerns to him, have him retool on this, and bring it back here.
The wind survey does go out.
It's gonna go, it's gonna be out there on the website, Facebook, uh, good question, you know. Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's gonna be out there in terms of that, and maybe other ones, and so, both. Make sure this gets out, we wanna get response, so.
Tommy's got a good point, though, you think about traffic coming in on Highway 7, coming out of Calhoun County. You know, I, I don't wanna step on anybody's toes in Calhoun County, but, you, you know.
Or just people in general that work at the ethanol plants.
Exactly.
They have to be the Casey's to get something beat, that's it.
Yeah, yeah.
He said, let us offer a way, so we should take, we start writing up, there's nothing, you know, I mean.
Well, and half's fair, I'll verify.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's like.
Yeah.
Is, is there a good way to do that, Jeff? Is there a good way to try to?
You can do sponsor posts, but follow up to like a geographic area.
Yeah, okay. You can pick a zip code, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's, I like that, yeah.
There are those discussions, discussions with the consultant.
There's a lot of contract workers that are living out at Rapids, Kansas City. And it's full of these contract workers, and a lot of them are, it's a little take a couple seconds, so, they're probably halfway across the county. I'm a little bit. I've been down there for over a year already.
Really? I think Coke, aren't they doing some kind of major, not really a refit, but I know they've been having a hard time getting everything up and running and going, my son calls out at Praxor. I know they've been. Yeah, so.
Even Humboldt County, too. I mean, you look at the traffic coming down Humboldt County. I mean, we, again, just because of where we're at with all those intersections, we are catching a lot. I like that idea of doing that targeted.
That's a coach. Because Hamilton, you got a little bit.
Yeah.
So, because I mean, Hamilton County advertises here in West County. So.
Out there, too, it's the. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, there's, and there's really no, nothing out there.
Yeah, that's a good point, too.
I just got a small gas station at the end of town.
What is for, for the workers going out to the Prestige Plant? Are they taking 4 lane 20? Are they taking?
They're all over, from what I see, it's everywhere. I think there's even buses coming to Fort Dodge.
Okay, I heard that, too.
There's not a good route to get there. And there's really nothing out there, if a guy wants to grab a sandwich on the way out, coming back into town.
Yeah.
And just keep it rolling for your best minutes, yeah.
It is kind of an open area.
A lot of good points, I mean, obviously, we have some major intersections that need to be taken, like, for, for the land uses are there, and that, you know, the desired uses that we would want to see would be there in place with the zoning, the zoning that would happen, with, yes, other requirements.
Anyone ask you, or come to you and ask you about a paved road coming, coming from Coke Nitrogen down 4 lane 20?
There's been some discussions, not, not from the private side or anything like that, I hear from the local lands sometimes, yeah, they wanna do something of that nature, that's, that one. And I'm just trying to figure out what the benefit of that is, I mean, obviously, we will.
Well, that, that was a question that was asked of me, and I said, I don't know anything about that, but.
It's nothing serious, I was throwing it out there.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it made me wonder why somebody's questioning that, why, why did that question come up? Is there an issue out there? I know there's a lot of traffic. Is it construction traffic? Is it going to be long-term traffic?
I think it's a long-term solution to get traffic on that, well, for some reason, to serve those workers, or that's true out there. They got those, yeah, they got those, yeah, highway 20.
Okay.
That's it, yeah, so that's, yeah, some of, yeah, some of those deliveries and stuff like that.
They got CO2 trucks coming in and out there. That was actually a major two businesses that they got to go in here, which is now.
How far is it from P59 out there, or 500?
As I say, I think people prefer, because they're closer to Dunkin'.
Interesting, yeah. Well, Jeff, that gives you something to think about, something to do.
I'll see you, yeah, next meeting.
Okay. If anybody, anybody has anything else they wanna chat about, if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, Tommy's motioning, do I have a second? Okay, for a second, all in favor, say aye. You know, thank you so much, guys.